You've got mail.
Scott, I have two states for you if I can ask. I got a call from Diana Peterson about the East Street Trade Park. And she had been in contact with Mr. Nelson from the group that owns it. And he was looking for someone to locally to clean it up. And I was by there today and noticed that they are working on it. So she has, yeah, she has given them notice that something has to be done. And so she did call me. And I did tell her that you would probably, I would like to know that you would probably be getting the call from Mr. Nelson.
He called this afternoon before I left because she told him to call this.
Yeah, I told her.
So the town could inspect it and see if there's anything else
Right.
that needed to be done. And then she on her part had six items he was supposed to complete.
So there's a big list.
A week or two out is when she's going to be by the inspector.
I emailed you the inspection report two times. I don't know if you got it or not.
No.
Maybe it went to your spam.
I did not get it.
Okay. It may have gone to your spam, but I'll try to send it again. But this is the.
Maybe send me another email just to like before you send it or right after you send it so I'll know before.
Why don't you take this one? And I'll, I'll just print myself another copy. Just take down.
It's sent yesterday. Jimmy went up and marked the gas lines or whatever he could.
They was up to work in the end of the day.
It looks better. I'm satisfied with it.
The guy, Helen Morrisville, who's over working on it. Guy purchased that from Demontre up around the Indianapolis area. He tries to stay about 45 miles away. He is the guy that does the work for him.
Diana Peterson told me they're trying to sell it. And that's why they're trying to get things cleaned up and boarded up so they can sell.
The guy I talked to today, the guy purchased it.
Did they?
Yes.
Wonderful.
They said he works for it.
Okay. Then because that Mr. Nelson was wondering if it's going to be more beneficial to sell the property or he asked me if I thought they put new traders in there and there was a need in the area for rentals.
Yeah, that I'm sure.
Maybe he was asking for that.
My opinion.
Whoever's doing the work today, he told me it sold to a guy that buys houses and everything. He couldn't turn it down because of the price. So the bank must have wanted out from under.
They did.
They were up there. But that's what he told me.
Good. Well, it sounds like we're.
But he said this guy usually stays around the Indianapolis area and don't get it. Because he come down here, come down to clean it and board it, put plywood on the doors. And they were doing all that today. It's better.
It is. It's much better. I was by there. The other thing is Robert Jones that owns the basin, did he get ahold of you?
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to get ahold of him about.
Well, apparently he still thinks we may be interested in purchasing that. So he wants to hear it from you that we are not interested.
I haven't heard any interest, so.
Right. So if you could give him a call and let him know that we are not interested, that would be helpful. He has been down there and he has done some cleaning, but it's still not what I call.
I said, I wasn't sure what for.
He did it or he cleaned around the fence lines and mowed around the edges and.
I was gonna say, I mowed this.
Chuck talked to me.
You got a lot of it? And then he come down with his boy one night. They were there like three hours.
They mowed over towards the park.
Yeah.
I didn't do that. Okay. I seen that was right there, but it cut just enough the sidewalk was.
But I want to give you a heads up.
That's fine. He's not home, but I saw that, but I wasn't sure what.
I wonder why you're not receiving my emails.
I got that email. I got an email about Jones. I did get that email. That's why I don't understand why to get this one. Unless it was the attachment perhaps.
It might be.
Maybe messing up. I did get one about this email. I wasn't sure. I guess I should. I was, I don't have anything to say.
Right. Well, until he goes forward, he wants to speak with you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So talk with these, just make it up to chickens. And just set the agenda items for next meeting, however they got time to.
We had him pay him off. I can't put it together right now. Yeah.
Anything else? Any questions about anything else before Kathy's right about the budget stuff? It's been a mess on the big guys. Trying to do budget stuff and it's just. No, the forms are just.
I don't have nothing for you, Scott.
Well, I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right. Get going.
Thank you.
If there was someplace to stop between here and Newport, I would. Well, I guess I could get one. Yeah, maybe.
So that'll be, you're going to chicken issue and still the next regular meeting?
Yeah.
And we're done budgeting.
I don't have to do that budgeting. Yeah, Mike, back in the corner.
I'll be able to throw something else in there too. I think Mr. Jones, the guy that was cutting those trees, when he got over here, he didn't realize just how much it was there to cut. And he worked like I said about three hours when his boy did. And I think he knows now that there was, there's a lot more there than what he got himself into.
Not to interrupt you, but he was here a month prior to that. And that didn't, that didn't grow that much later in a month. So he was already here. He told Diana the story and then it's back to a different thing now because he was coming to do bringing a crew to do stuff.
He did bring his son. He did bring his son that day, but he did say he's gonna bring. He has an 80-year-old father that's ill, so he has been taking care of him. He owns 280 acres in Hart County.
You guys already talked about the East Street Trade Park. Appreciate whatever you guys have done. I'm telling you right now, it needs to be done, cleaned up a long time ago. If they sold it, they can do a business up there. We can have revenue for the town then, no problem at all. You know what I'm saying? My other thing is, Dink and I got together and I was downtown the other day, huddled Bobby down there, and talked to the guy named Paul. Him and his brother Jay own the station down there. They are going to tear down that building, the old laundromat. But they didn't have the number for Jim and Debbie Jones. So I got it, gave it to them. They're gonna make contact with them and everything else. They're looking very serious about tearing that building down, get rid of it. They know it's a, they know it's an ISO work, you know what I'm saying? I told them about the barricades, so he just, they're working on getting it down, but they gotta talk to Jay and Debbie and see what they want to do first. I don't know. I just got out in the middle of it once I gave them the information. Another thing I want to bring up was, East Street, I'm glad we got on it, but there's a lot of other places in Monazuma too that need a lot of attention. I mean, a lot. And I know all you guys weren't here when it was going on, but when the, and I wasn't here for a long time for either, but when the sewers was going on, we kept hearing, everybody kept talking about how we're gonna put the new sewer in and clean up Monazuma and keep it that way. I'd like to see us really get hard and heavy on the properties right now.
Only thing I want to say is because this is the issue we run into every time. I send out that $9 certified letter. They have 10 days to respond. The thing is with being shorthanded and short one person to have these guys go in, if we do too many at one time.
We don't want to do them. We don't want to do a bunch of them. I mean, you can't. You can't.
And then because if they don't clean it up, the expense and hours is on us.
See if, talk to Scott and see if we can't outsource that and then the expenses go on their taxes.
Well, it can, but the towns bill out the dollars.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is rather than town do it, just like this property up here on Jefferson Street, they want the town to go up, they want to pull over. Rather than do that, get a quote from somebody and then versus what the town would, it would cost you for the town employees to do it. And I think you're gonna find out that time over here with all the employees being pulled in and everything else is gonna cost you a lot more than a contractor to clean it up.
Well, yeah, it is, but still.
You won't get that money front though.
Yeah. If them people don't pay him and the contractor goes in there, you're stuck till they pay the taxes.
If they.
If they pay.
Right.
And if not, you can be, go four years, trying to win their battle. It's a sad situation that it has to happen that way.
Thing is though, if you get a quote, it won't cost you dying to get a quote and then it give you something to work, work with. Because I'm sure Jimmy, like you said, he's short. He ain't got enough guys to go up there and clean on that thing for two weeks.
That's what I'm saying. That's what we run into.
Yep.
But at what point in time do we say we can't keep letting this happen as well?
I know what you're saying.
I think, I think maybe if we could talk to Scott, see what he thinks about, just get, call someone in here, get an estimate on cleaning up a couple of properties and if we can put it on their taxes and go from there. I mean, I don't know. I don't know how it works. I don't know how it works.
He's told us before, but I don't remember either. I don't take it into, into, if they don't hire you as an individual, we can't put it on their tax, on their taxes. I mean, if you went in there and done it and they didn't pay you, you're have to take them to court and whatever and then put a lien against their thing. You can't get, the two places can't be tied together. I don't think myself because that'd be, you see what I'm getting. And I know what you're saying. Have someone give a price and then what's going to cost the town, show the people. Okay. Here's what if you have somebody do it or here's what if the town comes in to do it because we're pulling them off of doing something else and equipment and then see if they move on it. That's a good idea. That is.
You know, a few months back, Tammy Reese tried to start a group in Monazuma, Monazuma Pride, for this very reason, to help people who were not able to get their weeds mowed down or their fresh trimmed. And she didn't get a very good response. Am I not right, Mike and April?
You're right.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you're, you're right, but I don't think she's gave up on that either. I just have to get slow. We haven't heard anything. But I know she tried to get different.
You tell her to come and talk to me, but because if it doesn't off these, and stop forgetting for me. And there's a lot of people that maybe can come and help. I'd be glad to. But what I'm getting, I don't see it on Facebook. I don't see it.
But it wasn't on Facebook. It was right here.
Well, I wasn't there.
The last, this is what I remember because I still have to pay for me. Scott had drawn up something, they had something drawn up. Scott said, this is what we need and they didn't give us anything there.
What do we need?
I can't see why volunteers can't go in and help somebody.
You do it every day just like I do.
I mean, because you ain't working under the town. You're working under yourself, you or whoever. Well, you're shit. You go up to the people and ask them, say, hey, we're here to help you if you're down and out.
But is that the problem with how many?
Well, some of them. There's probably, I know a lady on the south end, I like to go down and try to help out a little bit when the weather cools and I slow down a little bit. Because she can't.
To me, no action is not acceptable.
Right.
No action is not acceptable. If we know it as residents that somebody needs help and we're not helping them, that's wrong. We need to go in and try to help them out. And it will, it's to our benefit because it's gonna make our properties look better and more, be of more value.
The properties are really needing attention.
Yeah. Exactly. I think every case will be different.
People around town and you see the properties, we need attention. That issue of them people not being able to do something is not the issue that that property is.
In some cases, you're right.
I agree.
Ninety-nine percent, I should say, or 90, because they can do certain, and then it gets too overwhelmed, just like the old basin.
And it's unattainable.
And then that's, whoa, wait a minute. You want it? You know? And then what do you do with it? Because here we go again with the ordinance.
It's just one of those things where we all, all of us, all of our properties are cleaned up, looking good. And when you drive into Monazuma, you shouldn't see, I mean, I can, within a block of 36, that house right there by the school, the bottom of the school, been like that for years. I dealt with that guy when I was here. It just, somehow or another, we gotta put some teeth in it and tell him, you're gonna clean that property every day or not. And then go to another one, go to another one. If you have to do one at a time, then that's what you do. You take them to court, you put them in court and let them deal with it. If they don't want to clean it up, let them spend some money then. They've got to realize that it devalues the property, I mean, the property next door. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's.
Well, it's like when I called Mr. Jones that owns the basin. I said, look, I'm not trying to badger you. It's a matter of pride. You know, we care about our town and we want our town to look nice. It's a matter of pride. It's not that I'm trying to give you a hard time, but we want it cleaned up.
Said it before and said it again, those folks don't live in Monazuma.
Yeah.
So they don't care. They want to get their money out of their rent or whatever else. But they need to realize that we do care. We have pride in what we do here in Monazuma. And whether you like it or not, they're gonna clean up, clean up the properties. They may have bought it for $300 of tax, so I don't care. If it cost them $5,000 cleaning up, that's on them. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Hope everything's going well. Nobody's seriously COVID today. For the fire department, looking at seeing if maybe the town, we've got some money from the, through the CARES Act. Town's looking at purchasing a N95 test kit so we could fit our department with the N95s required for the COVID stuff. I'm waiting on some quotes to get back on that as soon as I get, I'll get with Kathy. See if the town will purchase that through the CARES Act and then I'll move some N95s and then clean stuff to help clean that stuff up after we're done.
So the fire department won't be included through emergency management, through that care funding?
I don't think so. Because the equipment will fall into the fire department after this is all said and done.
Okay. So anything you've spent up to this point, has it been purchased through there or?
No, it's been out of our budget. So I have receipts for, I think all of it, so. I'll get with you and.
Yeah. Well, you need to get with Ben because there's other things in the works, so we probably need to figure out where we are money wise.
So, yeah, if we did that, I know we got, the CARES Act came through, so take advantage of what we can if we, if we're able to, so helps us out.
Do you know approximately what that costs get?
No, I was hoping to get a quote before this time, but Kurt's supposed to be looking them up. He's occupied tonight, so as soon as I get the quotes, we'll go in there. I can't see it being a whole lot of money, but who knows? We'd be in medical items and healthcare items in the middle of a pandemic, so. I know as of the date for just respirators and all that, we've spent about $1,200 just on masks and respirator and.
Is emergency management paying any of that or none of that?
What's that?
Is emergency management providing or paying for any of that or none of that?
Any of the what?
Anything that has.
Probably not. Because they.
Your thought or.
It's gonna be in the.
With Ben, I'll call because the way I read the paper.
In the paper, I'll call and get.
They should have given each town a part penny, something. They did. Rosedale got a thing and they're already checking in the new.
But there's CARES Act money just for the COVID stuff, isn't that?
You can get it.
The CARES Act fund or CARE grants, that was just for.
Designed because we got power.
So it can't be used for anything else.
For any expense and care for like the mask and equipment or cleaning supplies.
Okay. That's what I'm.
Which one covers what?
We'll call them and find out too. They might have money coming there too.
If not, we'll.
Oh, that's good. Thanks a lot for everything.
Paul. I don't think I have anything, Mr. Orson. I didn't call you, Orson.
Just a brief update on the wastewater project down there. They got the tank filled yesterday, the settling tank filled with water yesterday. They got a couple of repairs that need to be made. It's not quite watertight like it should be, but B&amp;T's aware of it. We'll get it taken care of. They got some chemical going in now. Ron's gonna have to tweak it a little bit to kind of see where things go. It's a slow process. It's gonna take Ron some time to get it dialed in. But once he gets it dialed in, it should be pretty well set and forget it type setup. Other than that, the one thing that Dink was, I think Jim were down there. The slope on the south side of the settling tank is fairly steep. It's eroding a little bit. Wanted to know if it'd be all right if B&amp;T went down to the bottom of that, the gravel, not the gravel pit, but there's that low lying area out there. If they could just pull some of that dirt and debris up and kind of make it so it's a little more shallow.
It's all, it's our land.
It's, it's the town's land. I mean, it's, you guys can't be done with anything.
It just needs to be.
Done?
It's too steep right now.
Oh.
And the rain is rolling it. It's all rock anyway.
It's all rock and I mean, you can't use it for really anything else. Just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with it before I gave B&amp;T the okay to pull it up there.
Yeah. Anything, keep it. Try to get it. Something in there.
Yeah. So I, then I do have a pay application here for.
We do lie.
This is for B&amp;T drainage.
Won't you give us the bad news first?
And then they still have $20,000 worth of work to do, which is mostly just slight restoration work. And then we're still holding back $105,000 for retainage so that they make sure that they do the fence work, make sure that they get, there's a small leak in the chemical storage tank. It was leaking about 0.3 gallons a day, so we're still rip. They're gonna fix that. Sorry. Every time B&amp;T sends it over, it's super small and.
They give $1.
I did. Now you're.
So it's $1.69?
About this size?
Yes. Oh, payment, 58.
We called so much.
Got it.
You up? It's the 58.
We thought you said 58.
It sounded like it's.
Sorry, I had an air infection with this. You just gave him the 50.
Yeah.
It's 15. It's not my money. John wore it, don't I call them?
Sign, okay. Do you have a motion to approve these?
I'll make a motion.
Second? On favor? Something for financing immunity, is that it?
No, the. Right there. Right on that line there. Does anybody have any questions about the project down there?
No, just get that slope and pile.
I encourage all of you guys to go down there and take a look at it. It's a.
I went down there and tried to. Tried to help them mow the other day.
Doesn't look very expensive, but it was very expensive. It's deep. 20 feet deep, 30 feet long, 15 feet wide. The only thing that, I don't know if you guys have it or not, but as far as the kind of the building goes, need to make sure you guys have glove, rubber gloves, some rubber gloves in there, a face shield and then an apron. I know that's something that costs very much, but you need to make sure you have that in there in case, because the stuff is, you get it on the skin, you're gonna feel it. So just protection for Ron and Jim and those guys that are down there.
Got that, Jim?
Bring it back.
I was just coming in here and kind of what we were gonna do about chickens, but y'all said y'all are tableing it, so.
Yeah.
We just got more information today. That's why. We got the contracts that were done up in other places that we want to all review.
Okay, that's fine. That's kind of.
They got four different cities here.
Yeah.
Was it best or maybe not? We just have to work something out if not. We'll just see.
We're just in here in support of the chickens.
We'll just go to the end and then, everybody got their minutes of the previous meeting and any motion to approve or recommend changes?
I have a question about the August 6 minutes on the second page where we talked about the employees and hiring extra help. It says that the superintendent, if need to be called in someone to assist in case of utility emergencies, but yet we have already specified who that someone is, so shouldn't that be specified in minutes?
I have mine minutes, not just Dink or whoever was available at this meeting.
Yeah.
So if you want to clarify that in tonight's minutes, then we can do that, but.
Well.
Because they said Dink or somebody in case nobody can come in.
But we.
And then that's when Scott said he'd have to work on some kind of contract for someone to be able to do that.
Right. But we only have one contract for one person.
Because I think that's the only one.
It just needs to be done to put, in case any of us, Jimmy needs help one night when we're shy of people, then you gotta call somebody to be there.
Clear and trace or anything.
Yeah, that's just. Reclamation.
Yeah.
That's not in stone.
No.
So we can't, we will be all right with this.
Just a limit. Some kind of agreement.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I feel like there needs to be more discussion about the reason we're having to do that. Because if there are people who are not answering their telephone, we need to find out why and they need to be more respectful and they need to be answering the phone when Jim calls them and say, hey, you know, I, I got your call, but I can't come in for whatever reason.
You're right.
And they, we're overlooking the bigger problem here. So we need to do something about that. So that's my suggestion, okay? Okay, Jim? Okay. All right, Ben. I just wanted clarification.
Do you have a motion to accept?
Sure. I'll make a motion.
Second.
On favor? Okay, we got claims and warrants and the amounts for the end of July, $64,241.03 and a meeting tonight, $803,849.08.
$582,000 of that is B&amp;T's payment through the grant and local tax.
I make motion to accept claims, Lord.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
And I'm trying them after me, so we don't have to do it now. We've got three billing adjustments and the amounts of one hundred and forty-one dollars and eighteen cents, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents, and three hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents. Do we have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept these three billing adjustments.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the reserve we voted on to remove from the police roster needs to be stayed in the minutes. And while we're there, at four-thirty this afternoon, I was handed this letter that is Greg's resignation. Jake, can you say who the reserve is? You're not, you're gonna rid up?
Just the
Joe?
Stevens.
Stevens.
Okay, he went to the county, yeah.
And then we'll keep James.
And the two deputies.
Yeah, the two that were
So really, we're just
So you're keeping Mitchell, Williams, and Llewellyn?
Llewellyn, yeah.
I thought one of the county deputies couldn't
Not with that. No one. He's up, yeah. So we need, yeah, he's been, cause we never did do that.
Mitchell, Llewellyn, and who?
And James.
James, okay.
He's been a reserve.
Object.
Too.
Yeah.
And then Mitchell be back from schooling.
This captain, I'm sorry.
So So we need a motion to accept the resignation. And then forward.
I make a motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Is that finalized?
Yeah, sorry.
Advertising the paper again.
He's interviewing.
Get ready, Mark. Got their email.
So, can I ask a question? You mean Officer Greg resigned?
Yes.
Oh, gosh.
And what I asked him What would have happened? I'm, I'm curious, what would have happened if none of you had agreed to accept that resignation? I'm just curious.
There's nothing.
Nothing.
He's speaking officially in the minute.
Can't force him, but You can't do nothing, just like, you just
That's more like
It's like putting in a two-week notice on a job. You don't have to. You do it as courtesy of resignation. You go on. I mean, you can't do nothing. You weren't, you talk him into withdrawing, that's all.
He's already picking it up and we need to step, we need to go on then.
All right.
Now, here's, here's a question he has. He needs resignation. He said he'd give two weeks' notice. But if we told him no, it'd be fine with him. So, I mean, it's, it's a lame duck situation. I don't see where we're gonna get anything out of two weeks.
It'll take that long to turn around and receive an application.
Yeah, so, I think that.
What do we do about inventory then? Does he need to be there for inventory since he's been in charge?
There's supposed to be.
We don't have the previous inventory to, to go by, so We just have to go
Yes.
But you can't just start from the here and there.
Well, we talked to him last week.
Might want to call Scott.
Mentioned that again.
About getting the inventory, the what we do have, because
He said everything from the day he, he started forward.
Well, we didn't. And I reckon, I mean, personal might law, so.
Maybe James would be a helpful person since he's been here so long.
Yeah.
Like, helpful in what he, I'm pretty sure is there, who has what.
Yeah.
And we can find the list that I gave Keith Warner.
Warner.
And we have that to go by, and we'll just have to build from the books from there.
Is that the inventory that Dennis and I did?
No, that John and, John Pan and James Perry did.
Was that, did, what, did you do one, another one after me, after Dennis left? Cause I know Dennis and I did one when I left.
Yeah, because, yeah. James Perry and John Pan did one when, um, Rob, was it Rob?
No, they did it when Dennis.
They did it when Dennis left.
And then they weren't here or there, so I don't know who was on the board. And after that one, uh, what's his name?
Fred and I.
Fred and I.
And got the list, and
Then Warner, then after that.
And had to, if
Yeah.
Give it to him and then we got it back.
Just have to build it and go from there.
So, we'll get together after me involved, decide if I wanna do that.
Yeah. And morning, I reckon, after I get back from the doctor, the doctor's appointment that they, so, I mean, but, yeah, you won't be up moving till nine. I'm not saying you ain't up, but I can get the dogger riding around.
Uh, so, little advertise.
I want you to come forward. Do you want me to basically base it off of the last advertisement?
How long's that been? Just carry out. I don't, I don't know.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, March eighth, around January.
Yeah, January, cause we just took over, we done it at the firehouse. It was still
Wednesday you wanted the application. See, they get the Clintonian for, it's too late for Wednesday, right? It'll have to be by Tuesday for Saturday, is that right?
If you can get it to us quick enough, I can probably get it in for Wednesday. Keith's already got the manifest, but wouldn't slide it in.
Okay. So, right. Usually give it two weeks for the Takes the same as the second week of September.
Be the ninth.
And are we gonna do a project or a budget thing?
Well, I have that on the third.
Okay, yeah, that won't be, I was trying to get it, but it won't work out, that's why.
And our actual meeting's the seventeenth, so the deadline's the ninth, the application.
I'd say do it the ninth.
Jeff, we're closed on interviews. We wanted to have it done potentially. I mean
So you'd have to be an executive on the Tuesday view, and then hopefully set up
We can't meet on the ninth?
And have to the end of the day, I think, or a certain time of the day that
I, we usually say four o'clock on the fourth day, just so I have time to get my shirt ones in the pile.
Right.
It's up to you guys.
Whatever. Works for everybody else.
Yeah.
Is that day open?
It's open, yeah, it's open.
Do that September ninth at night.
Make a meeting night.
Okay, that works for me.
Okay, tonight?
What?
Uh, not evening. I'll make the work, yes.
Regular time six, so is that better for you?
Either five or six works for me. I have plenty of time to get, you know, what time you wanna do.
That would be a minute, five to seven.
Six is good.
Okay.
Six?
Yes.
And then have him get the, have that and Kathy accept the interview, and he can do that.
And let's pray we get some.
Well, can I make a suggestion here?
Sure.
No. Once you do the, once you do the interviews and everything else, and get it down to a couple of people, uh, check, go to Justin Gold, have him run a background check on these folks. We need to know who we're getting here. And then also, Jay, you and Bobby, call some of the references. Call some of the people that they used to work for, whatever, too. I mean, I know anybody can get a reference down and get a reference, but I'm just saying, do a little checking on these people. You don't, I mean, you put some of these guys on and it's like, you find out later on, they're wanted in Wyoming, you're like, I'm just kidding. But you gotta, you gotta, if they're gonna take hold of a position that is in, I mean, entrusted to, to provide a service to the town of Monizoma, then we need to know who we're getting. Simple as that.
Hey, do you want to get anybody signed up for it? You like it, go do the clap.
You could take that job, John. You could take that job.
Jake, Jake, you need to call Justin tomorrow morning, too, and let him know that he's re, is resigning. And we'll kinda get, make adjustments to him, get a little more patrol going over it, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, so, we wanna, yeah, maybe fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen?
Let's see how many you got.
No.
Probably fifteen.
That's gonna be an executive, so I'll advertise it.
I'm gonna, if he does that
I don't know if they did.
He said fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen.
They didn't.
Okay.
That's hard to put in cart before you go. I know how many applications are out there.
How many wanna interview? As long as I can have, I've got about a ten, we have about fifteen. Well, no, because
Yes.
If we get it in the paper on the twelfth, it's forty-eight hours notice, so you could have
Yeah.
Anywhere in there. And I can work with you on that stuff.
Well, if you're gonna review them on the ninth, then we can have that part, and then we do the interviews on the fifteenth. Keep it actually
I can go ahead and set up the fifteenth.
And, and then both the same end.
Fifteen, all right. You got me up here?
I've got, I've got it written down.
And we'll have to see how their calendar is for the interviews.
Yeah.
And we don't know if, uh, is there deputies turned this stuff in or not, do we?
No, not done.
What he was
Did he tell you?
Did we ask Greg to get it?
Yes, we did.
But we don't know if he's
We don't know if he did.
I'm gonna back up in front. We wanna know what his issue is.
Yeah, we don't We don't have to make purchase. We got one from Danville, where he always got Where we always got this.
We're here.
Hopefully, we can always cancel if you don't have any, but you guys, if you have severance, we need it in mind.
Yeah.
No.
No. Well, I've some. Okay. So I will call Greg this evening. We were in agreement not to do the two weeks thing.
Yes.
I don't see where we're gonna get anything out of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll call him, see anything.
Twenty hours, I was gonna see if he could get that stuff back. Now we made sure he won't get that stuff back.
So the effective
I mean, potentially.
Could've done it all down anyway.
Well, I don't know.
I don't know.
We, we could've done anything else in town. Sorry.
So you're not expecting nine threes of resignation date?
I don't see where it's gonna help anything.
I think he should be responsible to give you some list or something before he leaves.
Does it vacation?
Well, he'd be more than
And it's a great vacation.
But if, if we get that list, that's gonna be it, cause he's not gonna do anything else. I'm sure. Nothing against him, I'm just saying.
That's what he just told you, another thing, huh?
And do we know anything about whether he scheduled any coverage for the town?
Well, they're not, because they're not even giving the control that often.
Yeah. So, okay, go ahead and do that for six weeks, and, but we do need to know what's been returned, and we're gonna do an inventory.
Okay, I'm not following
Two weeks. We can have him go tell them
I said six.
So, September third is the effective date of his resignation?
Yeah.
Okay. That has to be in there.
So in these next two weeks, he needs to get
Yeah. I'd like to ask, how come he's driving the new truck instead of the white one?
I don't know. That's when I signed out there, that's the only thing I'm asking, I mean, that.
It has no decals, nothing on it yet.
Yeah.
He was told not to put a lot of miles on it yet, to drive the white one, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna need point now.
Fall cleanup.
There has been no date set for fall cleanup. Um, there's no homecoming this year, so we don't have to work around that. So Jim, what would be a good date to set?
I don't know.
Does it matter?
Whatever you guys decide, it'll just be then.
Okay. Well, um, we've done it the third Saturday of September, and we've held it the fourth Saturday of September, so it's totally up to you.
You want to be running that?
Okay. Um, what's our right field?
Day track the third.
This is the third Saturday, and this is the fourth Saturday. So we got this
Would, would the following week after meter readings be better? It doesn't matter. You're usually done with them on
Yeah.
Or well, I don't even know what day it's them on, for sure.
Twenty-second, but when it's on the Tuesday, they start on Monday.
You're reading meters on the twenty-second?
Okay.
So
It'd be, it'd be prior.
So, let's go with the nineteenth, and what to?
I'll do it.
Okay. So September the nineteenth, and I believe we go from four to ten, or four to ten, ten to four. How about, let's do it the other way?
Twenty to four.
Ten to four.
Or till four.
Or till four. Yeah. Is that good?
I'd make, let's, let's say nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock? Okay. Nine to four
One.
On the, on September the nineteenth? And you just want one dumpster this time?
I think that's all we did last fall.
I think so.
We did have a reserve for spring then, when
Yeah.
For all winter.
Okay, so I'll call and reserve one dumpster.
All right.
And you're gonna put any, the same
Yes.
If your limitations on what should be
Not building materials and
Are we gonna try to contact the tire companies?
Well, I can. Or you wanna do that? Go ahead. You go ahead and do that, and then I'll get the dumpster. How's that?
Okay.
All right?
Do you know what? That's a new owner. I don't think I have their number.
Okay. I'll see if I do.
I got it in the Rockville paper, cause they need a driver. I'm pretty sure they need somebody drives semi-hauling.
No. Okay, we talked about the East Street Center Park. Kathy's still having issues with Gateway, getting her budget pulled together and everything working. And, uh, do you think it'll be resolved?
Hopefully, it has major bugs this year. So hopefully, I
Love it all the time.
Huh?
Don't say bugs.
But I pushed the, that's why I put that on the post-public hearing. I pushed it back to October first, and then the final adoption on October fifteenth, so that they're not trying to get everything, and now we'll do it.
Okay, Kathy, you get your shirt tonight. Going around the table, yeah.
Going around the table.
Yeah, you got anything for her? Nate?
I think we've done enough tonight.
I'm in a grain. If we've covered some of the things, we'll table that, we'll all look over that.
Well, I got, I got a little item the other night, and stated that B and R had a complaint about us dumping all sewage in the river at the boat ramp.
Oh, my goodness.
So they contacted, I didn't, I didn't contact them. So we sent somebody out, and it was the artesian.
I was just gonna say
And they just, they wrote in, I say, oh, no findings. It's just a natural stream. It happens, and it's gonna be there.
Yeah.
So
I think it's six feet, seems like six feet below, it starts running out.
And, and what's that is, it looks like an oil sheet, but it's not.
Yeah.
It just smells terrible, and hell, they used to swim in it here in town, you know?
Yeah, it was a nightmare.
Yeah, it is. We'll give it up either.
Oh, yeah.
Damn.
I have already
Make a motion, let's go home.
Hey, wait a minute.
Hold the mic.
What were you thinking? I'm not, obviously. Oh, yeah. Well, Dave and I interviewed the chairman of Very impressive young man. He can start immediately. And if he can do that, he's a president employer. If you turn in your two weeks' notice, such an emergency response group, they power you. So he can start anytime. He's, uh, got, he's a chairman for Townsend, so he's got blood truck experience. And
The motion, Dave.
Where's he at?
Right down south, and I don't remember where I made it to.
Who's
Chandler Russell.
Chandler Russell. Brian, Brian Port, Doran.
Make a motion to hard Chandler Russell.
Second.
On favor?
I'm gonna abstain because I was not part of the interview process, not because I'm against hiring him, but because I wasn't part of it, so I don't feel I should have an opinion about it.
Okay, and does that motion include pending pre-employment?
Yeah.
And And per hour?
Use your kids.
First thing you ask, uh, how long do I have to get my fist on the road or I said it back? I said, I'll be taken care of.
Who cares?
Now you're tired? Now, Cameron?
Who's second? That, I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay, anything else? Anything else? That's a jury.
Aye.
Thank you.